Well, if I could have everyone's attention, good evening. It's 6:00 PM and I'd like to welcome everybody in the room to the January 30th regular meeting of the Monticello 82 School Board. I'd also like to welcome anyone watching remotely or anyone watching after the fact. Thank you for viewing your school board meeting. Please rise for the...
...of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, with liberty and just law.
So if we move into item number three on the agenda, we would like to approve, have a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
All moved.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Mark Branson. The agenda for this evening is approved. Number four on our agenda is citizens' comments. Oh, I'm sorry, we skipped the vote. I'm new at this. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the agenda approves six and oh, thank you. I'll do better next time. Next on our agenda is citizens' comments. I'm not aware of any citizens' comments this evening, so we'll move on to agenda item number five. We have Samantha Richardson, our high school student representative here to give us a report.
It's good to see some new faces in here. Today I'm going to kind of talk about what's going on in the high school, kind of talking about semester one, what kind of happened ending with that, and then us as high schoolers moving into semester two. So one exciting event that happened, which should be on the next slide, is cocoa and cramb. We put this together for finals week. We kind of got a bunch of students together in the media center to kind of study for finals with the end of that first semester. It was a big turnout, they got free hot chocolate, so who doesn't love that? And we had a lot of students show up for that. And also within the building, moving into semester two, we kind of have a different feel within the school, kind of more of a maturity with some of the freshmen and obviously the seniors getting ready to leave the high school and trying to not, you know, check out for the rest of the school year. So we're pretty excited about kind of digging into the rest of the school year. And then this week, we have an exciting thing happening called Cakes for a Cause. We're selling bunt cakes to raise money for the Arnz family because MJ Arnz got diagnosed with cancer, and so we're going to help donate some money to him for his fight against cancer. And then, not this week, but the next week, we have snow week going on, which is going to be super exciting with some events like the medallion hunt, which is basically a schoolwide search to find a little snowflake within the school, and we have a bunch of students get together and make that, and then they get to go and hunt for the snowflake within the school. Also have bingo, which is happening on Thursday, and then if you can see some of the dress-up days, like Monday we have PJ day, Tuesday Dress Your Best Day, Wednesday surfers versus snowboarders, and Thursday, which is spirit day, and we have the dance after school. And that's going to be the first time, I think, we have a dance on a Thursday night. So we'll see how that turns out. And then we have a bunch of fun clubs and activities within our school. Something to note is One Act, which is basically a group of kids that get together and perform dramas and comedies against other schools for a competition. We also have Knowledge Bowl, which is basically a group of kids kind of working together to do some trivia questions, and we actually hosted that at the high school, I think, not this weekend, but the last weekend, and that was kind of put on by Courtney Roach, which was a big turnout for that, too. I kind of got to help put together the folders and whatnot, and I used to be in Knowledge Bowl, so it was a lot of fun, and to just kind of see that within our school happen. And then lastly, we're going to play a video coming up here. It's with a kid named Logan Sinclair, who is involved in our Unified Music Group. He's also involved in Unified PE, and if you don't know what Unified is, it's basically a group of kids with disabilities and without disabilities coming together to do music together and physical education. And our choir director, Mr. Herf, was actually able to get a song put together by Tyler Swick or Logan, because he's a big fan of the Beach Boys, very big fan of the Beach Boys. So you'll see in this upcoming video Logan playing with boomwhackers to this song, "I Get Around" by the Beach Boys. That'll be playing next.
As you know, we do all of these boomwhacker videos that we do are from...
You can see Logan with his shirt on.
Well, last week I reached out to Mr. Swick, and I told him that we had a student who really, really loves the Beach Boys. And so Mr. Swick made a boomwhacker song, a Beach Boys song, just for you, Logan.
What?
Yeah. So we're going to do that one. It's just for you. And there's a little surprise for you, so pay attention, okay?
Good.
Now we have boomwhackers, Beach Boys.
Yeah.
All right, here we go.
Logan, what song do you think it is? semester, and we also have a few class meetings this week as well, which the principals will be talking to all the kids there. Like tomorrow, we have the senior class meeting. So that's just a little bit about what's kind of going on with the high schoolers. Any questions at all?
I have a question for you, Samantha.
Yeah.
Love your enthusiasm.
Thanks.
Presentation. Love the video with Logan, that was great. Getting back to the dress-up days.
Mm-hmm.
Any concerns about dress code on PJ day?
Well, we kind of have PJ day for like every kind of spirit week, and we just have it on a Monday, but I don't think we have had a lot of issues with it at all. People are pretty respectful for it, and they just kind of wear like their flannel PJ pants or whatever, so it hasn't normally been an issue.
As long as you keep it cold outside, it shouldn't be a problem, huh?
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Is there an award for the person who finds the medallion?
There is, yes. Student council puts that on, and we kind of have funding where I think we're getting, I don't want to spoil it actually, but yeah, in the past, it's been like gift cards or something like that, but this year it might be different, so.
For the bunt cakes for MJ, is that cash or card, or how are you guys running that?
Yeah, we're doing both, and I'm sure if any of you guys wanted to order some as well, we could get information out to you. We have a card reader at school, so a bunch of kids can order them there. Otherwise, I'm pretty sure an email was sent out to all of the faculty within all of the schools in the school district, and so they're pre-ordering for those, and then they're going to be delivered on Valentine's Day.
They're coming from nothing but bunts, is that where you're getting them?
Yes, exactly, and they're actually bringing it to us for free, so we don't have to pay for shipping at all. So that's really nice of them.
Is that the Maple Grove store?
Yes, exactly, yeah. Really good stuff there.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Samantha, thank, oh, go ahead. Anything else down there?
Talking about how good the bunt cakes are.
They're delicious.
They're really good.
If you want to order them.
I'll take a dozen.
Yeah. I know, right?
Oh my gosh. I even have a punch card, can you get him my punch card?
Sam, thank you so much for giving us such enthusiastic and a complete rundown of all the activities and things going on at the high school right now. You're welcome to, if you have things you need to do, you're welcome to as well. So moving on to number six on our agenda is our consent agenda items. I want to make just a comment about the minutes from the January 9th link that's on there. If anyone went through it with a fine-tooth comb, I might be the only one in the room that did, but there were a few very small things that we corrected on there, people that weren't in the right place for the right committees. They were approved correctly at the last minute meeting. The spreadsheet is correct, it was just an error transferring the information over. So that includes our, the consent agenda includes our minutes from January the 9th, our personnel matters, Bill's P card, Amazon card, wires, and our financial report. Are there any discussion about any of this? Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as written?
All moved.
Seconded.
So moved by Jeff Hegley to approve the consent agenda as written, seconded by Casey Root. Do I have a vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. Did I do better with that one? Getting there.
Going to agree.
Getting there. Moving on to our collaborative connections, and Principal Olson is going to talk about some donations.
Right, so we have...
Superintendent Olson, I just demoted you. Sorry about that.
Good, I've meant a lot of things, and that's a good one, so. So we have acceptance of gifts here, and the first one is $1,500 from the American Legion, and that's for the school patrol veterans tribute at Pine Wood Elementary. And Mr. Swawski did talk with Mr. Kraft today, and we are going to have a collaborative presentation on that later this month. Today, we're going to accept the money, but we want to get some of the connections that went into that donation. Next one, we have Minnesota State High School League Grant A, which is for a little over $2,000, which offsets fees for students who are on free lunch, so that's a big help to our family. An anonymous donation of $2,500 to support all high school activity. Have Monticello American Legion dollars for gymnastics program to help cover the cost of additional coach and some other program expenses. And finally, we have two. Cheryl Spade is a person who stopped by Pine Wood and donated to the Angel Fund and would consider her an angel herself. She really doesn't have a connection, like personal connection to Pine Wood, she just wanted to come to a school, and she had challenges she met throughout her life and wanted to give back to make sure that people maybe go through some of those same challenges were supported. And then Cellis Health, $12,000 annually for five years, so $2,400 per year, help with training tables at the Monticello High School Training Room. So an amazing amount of support over all our community, but this is just a snapshot of a big chunk of support coming in all at one time, so. Feeling when you read these and see how many different residents from the foster district. Very, very amazing community.
So this is an action item. Do I have a motion to accept our gifts?
I have to read the resolution.
You have to read the first, read it first.
For it to be resolved by Monticello School Board number 82 to gratefully accept the following donations. American Legion post $260, $1,500, the school patrol veterans tribute mural, MSHSL Grant A, $2,000 offset fees of free and reduced lunch, and this gift of $2,500 to support all high school. Monticello American Legion 5,000 for gymnastics program to help cover the cost of additional coach and program expenses. Cheryl Spade, $500 for Pine Wood Angel Fund, and still health for the $12,000 donation. New training tables at the MHS Training Room.
Now, do I have a motion to approve as written?
Make a motion.
Motion approved or moved by Mr. Branson, approved by, or seconded by Mr. Root. All those, what?
Second.
Is the second?
Yeah.
Just need a second. Okay, let's do this again. Thank you, Mr. Parliamentarian, that's why you're here. We've had the resolution, we need a second.
I'll second that.
Mr. Branson seconds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion passes six zero. Moving on to innovation and leadership, we have a financial forecast report from Tina Burkholder, our Director of Business Services.
Well, Kathy, I was on two boards, Masbo, my association with other business managers, and Rotary, and that was my least favorite task, was managing meetings. I dreaded it from the first one to the last one, so I feel you.
I'll get better as time goes on.
You probably will, but I still didn't like it throughout the whole thing. So tonight, we have a financial forecast that we'll talk about, and why do we do a financial forecast? We like to, you know, see where we've been and where we're going to head, so this helps with financial plan, how are we going to operate, what are the impacts of adding or subtracting something, so this kind of helps us navigate where our fund balance might be at the end of each year, and this graph just shows a history of where we've been. We had a dip in '18 as we've struggled trying to get used to how our special ed aid came in when we split, but had to be different with our host configuration with our co-op, so we had to kind of get used to how that funding works and have kind of managed to be somewhat on the, above our fund balance policy or our minimum fund balance. So tonight, we'll talk about our timelines that we have, we'll look at a revised budget as of now, and then look at some assumptions as we dive into a forecast and look at a scenario. So with our budget timeline, it starts very early in September when we approve a preliminary property tax levy, that is the first step in developing our budget. In November, we have some budget meetings with our buildings, talk about plans early, give the board a quarterly update. In December, I'm working on... In December, I'm working on that first budget revision, trying to compile new salary projections, budget projections on who we actually hired and have in-house versus what was estimated in May or June when you approved the budget. We approved that final property tax levy, we approved the audit. And then in January, um, this year we did enrollment projections. Normally I do that in November, but was trying to adopt to a new way of looking at enrollment projections. Do the financial forecast, again, building visits to kinda look at priorities and what's happening, talk about staffing. So that's where we are today. But continuing through that budget process for our new board members as well, um, for their input or for their guidance. We look at budget assumptions, we have that approved at a board meeting and fi- and start that budget process. Again, quarterly update. March, look at capital budget, have that approved by the board. Look at staffing changes in March and April, where are people gonna fit based on, um, the assignments and where the enrollment is landing. April and May, developing a budget, looking at the salary projections and budget projections. Again, giving a but, uh, quarterly update in June, approving that next year's budget and also looking at cash flow. With the forecast, we're only gonna look at the general fund, our main operating fund of K-12 activities. It does not include our special ed cooperative. So with the revisions on the revenue side, our enrollment projection was pretty close to what actually happened, so not a lot of changes in our local, local property tax aid and state aids coming in due to those enrollment changes. We did see an increase in federal sources as we were awarded another COVID grant, testing grant. So we're using that at Pine Wood to look at some ceiling tile HVAC improvements in that, in the, in those hallroom areas. And then in other revenue, increasing that by a little bit due to some, what I'm kinda seeing in the fundraising area, more is kinda showing up than what I anticipated, so beefing that up a little bit. So our total, um, revenue budget is increasing from fifty-one million to fifty-one point three million. And just kinda what it looks like, seventy-five percent is, comes from the state aid, almost eighteen percent in property tax levy and then federal and other. Any questions on revenue revised budget to date? Okay. And then on the expense side, so since June, we've had a lot of personnel matters. You know, who's actually was hired, what step in lane were they assigned to? You know, as they come in, what benefits are they gonna wanna have? Based on what Tina and Amy might think or project. We've had additional leaves, you know, staff going on leaves and then those substitute costs coming on. We've added some special ed paras based on needs coming in. So with all that happening, um, not a lot of changes with our overall salary budget estimate, but seeing a decrease in employee benefits based on just, um, different health plan selections or, um, what we thought might happen didn't happen. So that's salary and employment benefits. On the other side, um, changes with purchase services, supplies, capital outlay and other. Had some additional transportation routes than what we thought might happen, both in regular and special ed routes. Utilities, increasing those a little bit based on rate changes and, uh, cold winter. Again, another hundred thousand for our COVID testing grant, so the revenue and the expenses match. Speech services, um, had some turnover or open positions in our speech staffing. So instead of hiring, um, that budget got shifted to contracting the speech service out. Security upgrades, we still have, um, a cellular amplification project that we're trying to get done at the middle school, so hopefully this year we can get that done. And then our technology and building supply budgets carrying over what they didn't spend last year into this year. So overall, going from fifty point five million to fifty-two point, almost three million.
You know, the percentage increase on the supplies line? That's about a twenty-five percent increase from the original budget. Can you talk a little more specifically about what happened in there?
And some of this could be also a change between categories. So with supplies, that could be with the technology and the building supply carryover. Then also with utilities, um, we had a change in accounting where it started the year in one category and now it's in another category. But overall, um, it's our, um, technology and building supply carryover and some utilities in there as well. And then, those are the largest chunks and then there's, you know, fives and ten thousands that kinda add up differently.
Did, did utilities get moved then from purchase services into supplies? So that it increased supplies and we should anticipate it to be higher going forward because there's more utilities under the supplies line? We can talk offline too if we're getting too deep.
Yeah, I can't recall off the top of my head. Good questions. Alright, and then just a pie chart of our makeup. Again, uh, salaries and benefits is eighty percent of our budget, so that's a larger piece of our pie. And then the rest of the categories there. So we'll dive into forecast assumptions. So with our enrollment comparison, the top line is kinda where I projected the enrollment, but that includes all the bodies that are in our building, whether they're ours or they're co-ops or they're here full-time versus going somewhere else, like Wright Technical. So the bottom red line is what we actually budget for, what we get money for. So, um, it's smaller because the funding for the co-op kids goes to the co-op. And if they go to Wright Tech, you know, we don't get full funding for them. Or if the kids leave halfway through the year, we don't get full funding for that. So just kinda recognize, um, that difference and what it means to the budget. Revenue assumptions, so this is, every other year it's hard to forecast and budget. The two thousand twenty-three legislative is in session, so it's hard to know what our budget will be for the next two years with our general education aid. Our state special ed, assuming it's the same structure with the three big players. Monti, Becker and Big Lake are still all together and we're moving forward as one. Revised compensatory funds, if you recall from our December meeting, that our free and reduced population increased with the change in how the state and federal government are including now students under Medicaid, um, qualifying automatically for compensatory funds. So we went from a half a million for revenue in this year to one point eight million in revenue for next year. So, quick quiz, if meals are free next year and families don't have to fill out applications 'cause this compensatory is driven by families that do fill out applications and those that automatically qualify, should we be concerned if meals are free based on, for our revenue with compensatory?
Yes.
Because we should. So we do, we did have, I think, and I'm not sure, I think this includes kids that are under school age, you know, birth to five, but we had, uh, nine hundred students or population automatically qualify based on Medicaid. So again, that's not all students because we didn't have that many, um, overall. So just be mindful of that, that we should be concerned with legislation if, I mean, it's great for families, but there will be an impact in what we should put in our forecast.
Affect your RFP for your food service?
No. Our cares funds will come to an end after this year. And then we have other grants, our Grow Your Own, MTSS and rigorous coursework. Some will end next year and, and, uh, Grow Your Own will only be on year two of five. Staffing, um, taking the assumption we'll have three certified retirements each year where we would see a significant savings in staff turnover. You know, what we're paying a, a veteran teacher versus new, a newbie. Hopefully we would see savings in at least three positions. Taking into account additional staffing requests that we received from those budget meetings with the buildings. And then developing leadership teams at each of our sites to really dive into data and instruction and intervention and how we're helping kids. Other expense assumptions, um, salary and benefit changes based on contracts that are in place or parameters that we set at the board and budget committee meetings. Other non-salary, um, non-benefit costs increasing anywhere from zero to eight percent, maybe should be higher on some of these, especially with our health insurance. We do have another year where our maximum is not higher than zero, but what will our health insurance be after that? You know, if we didn't get increases that we deserved, how will, um, the next round of health insurance proposals look? No short-term borrowing is needed for cash flow. We're getting ninety percent of our aid during the year, ten percent after, so we don't have to borrow short-term to, um, help with cash flow needs. And then our total expenditure budget would end up, you know, about point five percent under budget or maybe a percent under budget in the future years. Cause years two, three and four kinda get, you know, really estimate, estimates based on estimates. So there's a lot of wiggle room there. Fund balance, we have a, a fund balance policy that we try to be within eight to sixteen percent. We have a committed severance fund balance that we'll use for retirement severance payments. Carryover, assigned balance will be on hold and evaluated each year. And then I added a new one this year and we'll talk about that either here or at the budget committee meeting. We have a third-party billing, um, designee that we usually use for special ed benefits. And then just deferring, using some of those funds in twenty-four, twenty-five to kinda bridge a gap that I see to kinda maintain us for a couple of years, so I'll point that out. Other assumptions that will utilize our trust for non-certified employee retirement insurance costs. Um, and that was the end of the assumption, so we'll kinda get into a scenario that I put together. So in this scenario, I'm using the governor's proposal. We'll get four percent increase in our general education aid next year and then two percent in twenty-four, twenty-five. No other, um, um, additions to our revenue budget, but just those two. Um, I haven't had a chance to dive through the governor's proposals. I know there's probably more in there, but I just wanna focus on those two items. And then in he, in the, in the forecast, putting in those additional staffing requests. And then with those two things that we end the year about seven percent in year two, twenty-four, twenty-five. So in this table summary, you can see this is this year first, our base year. So we'll probably end around nine and a half percent in our undesignated fund balance. And then years two and three, or actually one and two, if we keep things as is, but then add those additional staffing requests where we'll be almost ten percent in year one and then just barely seven percent in year two, but then we really fall off the cliff in year three. And here's that, um, bar graph for you to see that. So I'm trying to save some third-party billing money to kinda bridge it in twenty-four, twenty-five to get us to two years. And then in this year, in year three, the blue bar is what if, so we really fall off the cliff. So if we did three million in budget reductions, we don't get all the way up to eight percent. Four percent maybe. And so, and the peach is if we did nothing. So it's really important to decide what do we wanna do moving forward? And if we do get additional money, like that needs to help us get beyond year three. Um, so I'm just showing you what four and two percent gives us and that this cliff is coming. So, you know, we're just kicking the can down the road a little bit, showing you what's in place and if we added a couple of things to help the buildings, um, how we're sitting. But we really need more than just four and two percent from the state to kinda keep us going for a couple more years. Does that make sense in what I'm trying to portray?
How many more employees was, was it that you were talking about for the additional?
Yep, let me see. Nine, I believe. So, and this, and the additional FTEs is to help with like speech, one elementary classroom, EL, some pair, uh, special ed paraprofessionals, um.
Reading support?
What?
Reading support?
Reading support, thank you. And a couple more behave, special ed behavioral intervention is so that, so our class sizes will be almost the same, maybe a couple of students better. So that's not making a lot of improvements to the classroom. So that's, so you can kinda see what four and two gives us.
I was waiting to see the principals start screaming when you said that, they didn't, so. You know, we've, we've heard that, uh, class sizes are too big, but, um, I'm curious. You said the four and two percent won't be enough. What would be enough?
Oh, I don't know. Probably ten percent.
Better ask for fifteen.
We can do, that, that's for our budget committee. I, I didn't, I can get lost and just be in my spreadsheets for hours, but it's, if I don't know what you guys wanna see, it's hard for me to, to know that yet. So hopefully in that budget committee meeting, we can kinda dive into different scenarios. And I can do more for the whole board, um, February sixth.
So then the nine, what driving did, what did each school participate in? How many they needed exactly was that?
It's, yeah, it was more like needs though, not the want. It was looking, looking at the special edu, a lot of special education needs and where we've been at, uh, this year with, um, behaviors. So it was, it was more needs than, uh, you know, that second tier of wants slash.
So do they ever provide a want, like, no, we need forty more teachers would be their recommendation? Or thirty teachers or sixty teachers? Or it's just kind of, or is it just a snapshot in time? We're just gonna ask for what we think we can get?
Yeah, I mean, we didn't even get into class sizes. That's not, that's, if we got class sizes, that would make that thirty.
I'm not talking about Tina's, I'm in general, with all the principals in the schools and stuff.
I think from our meetings, they were still getting used to the fact that I said we didn't have to cut next year. They probably still don't believe me. So they're just happy that we can keep what we have and not have to do that other round just yet.
That's a tough one too, is like when you're even just saying we don't have to cut. Like even on years that we don't have to cut, we still have to right-size staff. So like, you know, like I can speak for elementary and middle school, there's at least between a one that will have a shift and middle school that will have a potential, I think they're potentials right now. This is all a draft. In order, and that's the hard part, in order to, um, to not have these drastic dips and valleys, uh, right now we're still in just maintaining of what we have. We're not in building back. And so tha- that's the tough part right now. Like when you say that we're not adding, uh, uh, or we're cutting, I'm sorry. It, that almost feels like, oh, then things are gonna get better. Not gonna see huge improvements in staff with the four and two. Now, if we get some additional, um, income coming in, um, the governor proposal, that's not part of this yet. Most can get at some of that question, Casey, is what's next? What's that next layer? And that's when the buildings, um, be able to get at some of those next layers of needs slash wants.
Or get us beyond year three.
Get us beyond year three.
And also like our purchase services, are, are there any contracts that are coming up for renewal that we can better negotiate to get the money there? Or are we just under the assumption that this is what we paid previously, we're going to accept that, get a four percent increase or six percent, and then we're always scrambling and we're always behind and we're not actually negotiating that upfront that are more beneficial to the school? So I think it's something worth looking into as well.
I can speak to like food service and how that goes. We put it out and bids come in. We had quite a few different food service places with bids, include budget and stuff, but we do, you know, inflation's inflation.
with bids, include budget and stuff, but we do, you know, inflation's inflation. So every business feels that, and we're going to feel it, too. But then it's, it's kind of a cool process about how we ended up with the service contract that we did, because everything's rated, and budget is a huge, rated at a higher percentage than a lot of other pieces of it. But the state requires Tina to do that so that we don't misuse our funds.
Right, right.
So they oversee all of that.
Our next largest RFP will be transportation, and that will be next spring, next winter, spring.
Insurance, which we got a good rate now and have knowing, so, I mean, those are the types of things that we are being very mindful of, and have been able to get some good contracts.
Reality, this is what it looks like every year for a bunch of forecasts, that third year. And I understand the process, how you're forecasting, and looking at this, but, I mean, we run into two-year cycles with legislature, so it's, it's a challenge to predict, you know, exactly what happens in the third year. I understand why we do it, hope to be mindful that quickly things can change, but I understand too that, I mean, the primary focus is on a two-year cycle that we're looking at in the container. So, I mean, every year that we've had, we follow year three.
Well, I don't even show years four and five anymore.
I know, I know, I know we stopped, I know we stopped doing this because it's such a.
Be gets kind of iffy.
Yeah, but, I mean, we've had year threes that have been much worse than that. We still have to be very mindful approaching year three about how, looking at spending and costs and revenue and all that, but it's still just, it's important for us to just , you know, focus on the next two cycles and understand that that third year is.
And it's challenging, I mean, if you go back a couple slides, since, I mean, we were at, you know, eighteen, and we've been able to keep going in the right direction, but we also had unique, different income sources during that time. We had testing, the different types of ESSR funds, and also during this, that same period of time, we were able to secure some grants, but we have some of those grants falling off, too. So this isn't even, that year three, we started needing to account for if we're going to keep some of those positions, some of those go away, too.
Yeah, I don't think I ever, like, this is cutting three million. So you need to do more than three million to get us to eight percent. So that, I mean, that is a big cliff that we haven't had for a while.
I mean, we did split it in two, we, that's exactly what we had. We had two in one point, the last two years. We cut two last year, and then it was supposed to be one, but we're, because of your conservative guess, we ended up, we would be, be status, we ended better than we thought. So, I mean, it is, unfortunately, and I think the exact number that hasn't, but like Jeff said, it, it is cyclical, at least for us, in the pattern that we're in.
Tina, when you're doing this forecast, what do you project salary percentages that end up in contracts? Are you projecting form two? What are you putting in for?
Well, it's a combo percent that I include, you know, the automatic things that happen with the contract as if nothing would happen, and then adding a multiplier after that. And I don't, I don't know if that's negotiating in public where I can share that, or just we have those discussions in our committee.
In the past, we've had those discussions in committee. Because obviously, that's coming up.
Questions? Thank you, Tina. Maybe the numbers aren't where we'd like to see them as we look out a couple of years, but it's been a kind of tough for everybody. Moving on to eight B on your agenda, we're going to hear from Clay Swatzky, our communications director, about Minnesota State High School League Form B.
Good evening, thank you. I'm here, excuse me, I'm here tonight on behalf of Gary Rabenig, our activities director at the high school. He is working on a grant form for the State High School League. The board already approved some dollars for Grant A from the State High School League tonight, and now he's pursuing, as you mentioned, the Form B, which is essentially a training education opportunity for staff members in the district. So his hope is he's applying for this grant opportunity to fund CPR training for all coaches in the district, which I know is something that a couple of board members have previously expressed interest in. And he's hoping to get some funding that will allow to pay stipends for staff members to take this training and for any additional costs that would be incurred in providing this training. And as a formality, he needs the board's approval on a resolution to complete the grant form.
I hear a resolution.
Do you want that whole thing read, or do we just say?
Is there a?
I apologize, I don't have it in front of me, but I think you can, you can make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for Form B two as presented by Clay.
So I have a motion from Jeff Hegley to approve Form B for Activities Director Gary Rabenig to pursue Minnesota State High School League Form B. And I have a second from Mr. Casey Root. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're moving into number nine on our agenda for tonight, safe and healthy culture. We have a first reading of policy and a procedure that Mr. Olson is going to talk about.
So we have a policy six oh six coming to first reading here tonight. The policy used to be named textbooks and materials, and right out of the get-go, you can see that there's been a lot of work to this policy. In fact, it's been worked on since September, which is a long time in policy standards from what I've seen so far during my five years. But the policy name is now text, is core instruction, instructional and supplementary, supplementary material review, selection, and use. And the purpose of this policy is to provide direction for the review, selection, use of core and supplementary instructional materials. I also think it's important just to read the general statement, so we get a feel for what this policy is, and then I have it done, and, and then we'll put it forth of first reading here tonight. The district's curriculum focuses instructional practices on challenging and supporting all students in the pursuit of their highest personal and academic achievement. In order to achieve this, the school board insists that appropriate and high-quality instructional materials be used to deliver the adopted curriculum. All instructional materials, whether core or supplementary, must align with the advance of the district mission and vision, support the implementation of state and local standards. Instructional materials shall challenge each student and prepare them to thrive in American society at large. The school board recognizes this, that selection of core and supplemental instructional materials is a vital component of the school district's curriculum. The school board also recognizes that it has the authority to make final decisions on the selection of all core supplementary materials. And with that said, this policy has started at advisory committee, and then it's also been in our policy committee. And like I said, it's been worked on since September. We're bringing it forth to the full board for the first time, first reading. And we believe that this policy will guide all of our stakeholders, both inside the educational system and our families, who are our partners in it, and really show, you know, what practices and, and standards we're going to uphold every time we add curriculum, whether it be supplemental, that a building's going to do, whether it's the curriculum advisory committee, and any adoption committee that our folks work through, whether it's a quick little material that somebody finds over the weekend while they're preparing to deliver a engaging lesson. We want to make sure that we provide everybody the procedures with the policy, so that we can make good decisions and the decisions all be, have that core, those core standards that go into each decision. I bring this forth here to you tonight, so that we can all get a good feel and handle of how we're doing business. Like I said, the black, the red line is all the, so this used to be a very simple policy, but it's, it's become a little bit more complex, and had to have the hands of people in order to guide that transparency that we want as a district, that's part of our strategic plan.
I would also point out that there's a procedure attached with this, that hopefully we'll hyperlink that in the policy eventually when we post it. And the po, the procedure has a great deal of detail in there that's been worked on by a number of different people at different levels in the district for challenging material that they feel is inappropriate. Parent opt-out, I think, is in there for specific additional assignments and such. So while we're bringing this in a very compressed discussion time here, as Mr. Olson said, this has been worked on literally for months and months and months, and has been through dozens pairs of eyes and comments, just to get it to this position in time. Now, after first reading, just so people know where it's going after here, it will go back to the February sixth work session. Preceding that, we have policy committee, so it'll be available again on February the sixth for any additional comments, changes, discussion. And then February twenty-seventh would be our next regular meeting, and we would bring it for second reading on that time schedule. So just to let people know what the time schedule is, because this was a very big project, and a lot of stakeholders have really had their hands in it, and also comments from the public about the procedures involved and whatnot. So I think we've done a lot of good work that wasn't there before. I think we have a lot of good guardrails in place. I feel good bringing it forward for our first reading today. So this is not an action item. Am I correct about that?
Correct.
Correct, it's just a first reading today. And so, is there any additional discussion about that from anyone else on the board?
I do have a question. So this was developed with a, at least a CAC, I think, on that board as well. So this is presented to the board, so has that group in its entirety actually gone through each section, line by line, before it's presented to the board? Everything in here was agreed upon by that entire committee before it's presented here?
Well, I mean, as much as you can ever have anything agreed upon, I mean, it, we, you know, listen, take feedback, and is make the changes to get it to as close to consensus as you can. I don't think that when you're making these types of changes, you, you've done a lot of work, and you've listened to a lot of people, but that doesn't mean that there's always going to be consensus across a district of four thousand three hundred students and families and staff members. So, but it, like Kathy said, this went through the hands of more people and more times and more hours than any policy I've seen in my eighteen years here, so.
To add to that, the curriculum advisory committee meets, committee meets quarterly. And so Cindy has provided this as links to people on the committee numerous times. We don't really have time, and the amount of time we have, to go through it line by line and still get the things required to have briefed through that committee statutorily, which are things like the MCA data and various other things that Cindy has to provide on a certain time scale. So it has been provided. Did we go through it line by line as a group of fifteen or thirty people? No. We did have discussion about various parts of it, but not line by line.
So there's a lot of changes here, like you said, superintendent. We talked about this began back in September.
It actually began before that. I, I think there was a move even a year ago, when we implemented some library changes with Carrie Green. This was the impetus for a lot of this. We had no, now we have a very elaborate library database that parents can access. We have guardrails in place, they can, the equip, or the library materials at the middle school, an eighth grader has a different access than a sixth grader does. Parents have the ability to put limits on what they want their student to have access to. All of that laid the groundwork for moving into this discussion, and I'll let you elaborate on that if I've spoken out of turn.
Did you say, finish here?
Oh, yeah, I'll listen some more, go ahead.
Oh, what, can you say this was a question again?
Oh, so, well, when you said September, I was curious, if we say that the CAC meet, CAC, I say CAC because committee's part of that, it'd be kind of funny to say the CAC Committee, but the CAC has met quarterly, so that would indicate a couple of meetings, but maybe more than that. And with this many changes, number one, what was the initial reasoning to attack this with so much change? You know, what did we have before that was so broken? Yeah? And so then, was it, was it the parents, was it the administrators, was it the teachers, was it students that, that prompted all the changes? And then if we're going to, you know, go through this, this extensively, have we really covered everything?
Yeah, I've, I mean, just, I can give a, I can draw principals in on this. I'll just say, being here for eighteen years, when a challenge was, happened many years ago, you would look at it with the parent, you'd look at it with, if it was coming out of the media center, you'd look at it with that teacher, you'd look at the policy, if you make a call to the superintendent, and things could move pretty quick. I think it's the, maybe the need of the community that drove, drove the changes, or the, you know, the voice of people wanting there to be some of these changes. So navigating that wasn't coming from administration, it was coming more to get this to a spot where people felt like, oh, we were being transparent to do things and, and the community in the way. Yeah, because it was a lot easier, I'll say that, as a principal, and the coming from the district. This is, and, and for us, it would seem way more comprehensive, but we've, as the CAC Committee, as the policy committee, that we were doing this for the, to the community. So it was not, it's not coming from administration of the, like, we need this to, you know, to, because, to do our jobs. It's to make sure that people are feeling heard and valued throughout the whole system. But then there is guide rails that you do need for, for your staff. So if you're constantly getting challenged just at the classroom level, you would want to have some guidelines so that we have some support, so that it's not taking, you know, the teacher's time to go through some of those challenges that we have a, a support in, in place. So the added detail is really a combination of meeting the needs of, of the community, of where we think that this is, are asking for.
And Mark, part of like us having a first reading here, it gives the board to, most definitely for you to go through and say, I don't know if I agree with this, you know, why is this in here? And this is what I think, and so that's why it's important on these first readings for us as board members, go through this and have that opportunity to say, have discussion about why we think so.
And we can put it on, like, the, like Kathy said, the work session, it can be a full discussion again, that way, because we have new board members. It has been full group prior, but we can get it back out there.
Well, I think that would be a, a good move, at a minimum, in that I think that you're right, the community is concerned about this exactly. And if last week's CAC meeting was a representation of how most of the CAC meetings go, then it would be hard to believe that the community really has had significant impact on the changes, because there's not a lot of community there, and the buzzwords go back and forth. And you had a lot of time to go through your stuff, so I, I just want to make sure that before we push it through, we feel ready to back it. I think the community's really counting on us as a board to represent them on behalf of their children, to make sure that, whether the guardrails are in place this side, or the protections and the steps that the community wants in place are in there for their side as well.
I, I agree with you, Mark. We have to also be mindful of open meeting law. And so when we're working on things, we can't really bring a group, bring it to a group of six. of six in every environment. And so this is the mechanism to bring it forth and then pull it back to a work session, so that all six of us can talk about it at the same time. So we do have to be a little bit mindful of that. I do think that a lot of this was driven by parent and community concerns. There were perhaps not as transparent a process for, for choosing these materials or for how to opt out of them. And I know that one of the biggest goals that we've had working on this from the beginning was to come up with an objective, transparent, step one, step two, step three process, so that someone doesn't feel like it was just a decision made by someone quickly, or subjectively, or, oh, I, you know, I complained about something, therefore they're just going to say no. So we really are striving. We, we'll never be perfect, I think. And that's why we bring policies back for changes and updates on an annual or every other year basis. So this is so much better than anything we've ever had before, from my opinion on that, that I'm excited about it. I just think we've made tremendous progress since we started the library procedures, getting those available to the public. We don't have families that just wander into our libraries anymore with our security systems. We have to make, we have to make a different effort to be transparent about a lot of this. So I feel good about where it's at. Is it perfect? Probably not. But certainly, there's room for a lot more discussion. So.
And I think the discussion, I'd like to continue the discussion on both sides, you know. Are we responding to the community like was originally requested to, to prompt all the edits? And number two, on the other side, are we putting our teachers in a position where they can't hardly get anything accomplished, because there's so many, there's so much red tape between them and what the community is expecting from a guardrail or, or policy curriculum program like we're talking about here?
There could have been more in here, to be honest with you. And they did pull the guardrails back. My one item that I remember that got pulled back was, you know, classroom, all your classroom books be inventoried, that you purchased through Scholastic over the years as a, as a teacher, or people give you as gifts over the years. So those books get used off the shelf in classrooms, you know, every day. And we, you know, to have teachers inventory hundreds of them. That is something that we did, step back and say, you know, use your professional judgment, which is even, statements are listed in here for all of us, you know, in the occasion to use that, our administrators need to use that. But at least they have some guideposts to do that. Teachers have that. So I think in the end, you know, that Ms. Foshee worked with teachers all along the way, small group, big group. And I think it's at a point that if, once it got to here, be bringing something forward that we think would. Another one that we pulled back on was, you know, that it's the teacher's responsibility to, all of a sudden, if somebody challenged something, that boom, you have to immediately come up with a whole new lesson and things like that. So we have, we have a lot of things that we, you know, that we did come back to. So, I mean, in education, what we're always trying to do is, is provide a balance. So it's, and it gets out of spot right now, where, you know, professionally, I feel like it's out of, it's out of balance that we can represent, we can represent the community, we can represent our people, I think, very well. So.
So in the event that in a workshop, we beat this thing up so bad that we're going to send them back to the drawing board, does it make sense that we, that we postpone the first reading until we have a chance to go through it in a workshop, so that our first reading is really that, and then we can tighten it up for the second reading?
Yeah, we don't, I mean, we don't, we're not required to bring this forth the next meeting for a second reading. I mean, we can take time to
Stay at first reading.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, it's just Mike, there's so much red here. It's like, it's like it's a whole new policy from scratch. If I'm voting for something, I truly understand it and have time to, instead of have meetings on it.
It can stay here at first policy forever. We have the old policy right now, you know, to guide us. And we'd be happy with that as far as you want.
Well, but that's what, that was kind of my concern, is if we were going to say that, then, then who is really benefiting from the changes? If, if this side is, is okay operating with what we had, then is there enough protection on both sides to make it worth all the changes? Well, I, I think that's a good idea, is to let it sit at either first reading or postpone, whatever we need to do. Is that an action item that we need to?
I think we have it on our work schedule, or our work agenda for the next work session. And so we can certainly talk about where we need to go at that point. That's what the work session is for.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we, right now, we have a schedule to bring it forward. It can change.
That's fair.
Well, I, just a personal note on that. I think we also probably, if we're going to do that, we should set ourselves a schedule to make certain milestones at certain points. You know, having something languish in committee for months and months and months is maybe not a good idea. It probably would be good to wrap this up and start moving for next school year with something new. So maybe we could look at a timeline to, to make some decisions at that point.
Yeah, I think if the next, the next meeting, if, if all the board members are prepared to, you know, they've gone through this, they've written, they come back with, either this is what I feel is an objection, or this is what I don't want to change it at all. I think that would be the next meeting beneficial for everyone, rather than just wait until the meeting to go through it and just never get anywhere on it.
Do we have a model policy for six oh six?
There is, there's our old one.
Is that, is that the model policy, though? I don't know if there is a model for six oh six. I'd have to look.
There is.
Probably not this detailed.
But on that same point, if there is a committee that meets quarterly, I think also be, after our meeting of the board with it, that we come to a resolution, what we think is good. If we have another, maybe sit down or meeting with the CAC group as a whole, or other community.
I think we have enough.
Make sure that, okay, this is part of your guys' group's decision requirements to go through. Is this what everyone was on board with before?
Member committees, they make recommendations. It's, yeah, so it wouldn't
Like, we don't need their approval, but they have their input on there, is what I'm saying.
And we've had it there, you know, many times, that we can, we bring things back. And what I mean by, I'm okay for it sitting here. One of the things that I know about our people is I trust them. And so, like, we've been operating the way we've been operating and, you know, with a high degree of success. We, we work with people. If they have a problem, we work with them. I've been called over to different schools. I sit with, with principals and families, and, and we talk things out. And we leave those meetings in good places. And our, that happens every once in a while. But then, I mean, there's things that happen. People make decisions every day in our district, and they make decisions in a way that make us all proud, all stakeholders, whether you're a teacher, educator, support staff, family member, or community. That is, that's what we try to do every day. And so I, that's why I can sit here, because I know I trust our people. And we're going to keep doing what we do every day. And we can wordsmith things like for years, try to get it to a consensus level. But I'm just saying, it, it, you might not get it to consensus level. But I'll tell you right now, it's not working. And so, because we're doing the right thing. So.
I think as far as the time work, I think if we, if we just have our next work session as
We'll never be able to do that. We have lots of things
We have a lot of stuff on that one. We almost need another one.
Yes, it's packed already.
It's a budget time, it's
We could use two more.
Well, I mean, Kathy, I'm
It starts from
You have an idea of where you want to end this, then I think we'll find that.
Because if we don't get everywhere next work session, you just, you can
We'll put the quick stuff on the agenda early, so we can burn through that a little quicker. So make sure that we're mindful of how we arrange the, the agenda. And Policy will be meeting before that at 3:15 as well. And so this is available to Policy again at 3:15, before we meet for work session at 5:00. So, are we good bringing that forward to work session?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
So I think we're now down to the adjournment. Our next meeting is a work session on February the 6th, Monday. And before that, we have 3:15 Policy meeting. I think we're having budget after tonight. Yes. So, anyone that's interested in observing the budget meeting is welcome. So do I have a motion adjourned?
I'll move.
Motion by Melissa, seconded by Mr. Root. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is, meeting is adjourned at 7:07 PM. Thank you, everybody.